This meeting of the Board of Supervisors, Penn Township, will now come to order Wednesday, September 30, 2015. It will stand for Pledge of Allegiance at a moment of silence.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please proceed. Okay, this time we announce that we did have an executive session today on personnel issue. That being said, we will move into the recognition of visitors, and I understand we got to request Mr. Tiplitz to be first.
Thank you.
Floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I think there may have been a miscommunication on the date that I was going to be here, so I apologize for that. And I know you have a long agenda, but the purpose was really, I just wanted to introduce myself to the supervisors and to the public. I'm Rob Tiplitz. I'm the new state senator for the 15th district, which includes most of Dauphin County and all of Perry County. You didn't elect me. You didn't vote for me. You inherited me when the district lines changed in December halfway through my term. So I've been representing Perry County since December 1st of 2014, just trying to get around to introduce myself to the local officials and members of the public. Just to make sure you're aware, we have an office to serve you. In addition to the office in the Capitol, we have an office in New Bloomfield, right where Senator Corman, who was my predecessor for this area, right where he had his office next to the pharmacy. I have full-time staff there. We also have what we call mobile offices around the county, so that if people don't want to come into New Bloomfield and it's not urgent, they can visit one of our other offices that we have twice a month. So really, just wanted to introduce myself, address any questions or concerns you might have either now or in the future. And I wanted to make sure, most especially, that supervisors received our grant directory. We have this directory that I'll leave with you. It's so that local governments and really anyone, nonprofit groups, other community groups, know what state financial assistance is out there, state and federal. I have someone in my office whose job it is to help coordinate our support for grants that you might be applying for, so that we can support that through a letter in your application and help walk you through the process, but most importantly, to make sure that you know what's out there, so that we can partner with you. So that's really it. I just wanted to make sure that you got this personally and address any questions or concerns you might have.
Thank you. Any of the audience, any questions for the gentleman?
The budget and what's going on right now that have any effect on the fire company grants that are coming out.
The budget situation is going to drag on for quite some time.
That's understandable.
It may affect the timing of the grants. Right now, we're in a process of following up, because not every fire company has submitted its application. And the Office of State Fire Commissioner works with us to let us know which companies have not yet submitted. And so we make sure that we give a phone call to try to remind people. And this happens periodically, because we keep getting updates. So if there's any doubt about whether the application is in, you call our office and we can check on that.
Thank you.
I just have a question about the budget. You said it may be a while after that happened. Can the legislature override the governor's veto?
The legislature can override the veto. It was attempted with the governor's veto of the original budget. There were not, and it started in the House, there were not enough votes to override the veto, so it never got to the Senate. The governor vetoed the stopgap budget. And I don't think there's even going to be an attempt to override the veto, because I think that the leadership of the House and the Senate realized that the numbers aren't there. So procedurally, it's possible, but realistically, the numbers are not there to override the veto. And unfortunately, I think the compromises on both sides that need to happen have not happened yet. And unfortunately, I think this is going to drag on a little while longer. I know it affects local governments and others who depend on state funding. All I can do is tell you that we recognize that, and I hope that, you know, the short-term pain that this causes and imposes will be worth it in the end when we get to the end of this process. And I'm working to do what I can to try to make sure that, long-term, it will be worth it. Thank you. Thank you very much for giving your time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Have a good night.
One thing I forgot to announce, there was a request for the meeting to be recorded in video. I need to bring that to everybody's attention. Okay. Next on the agenda, Paul Rudy.
Well, I've been here a number of times, and you did elect me at one point. But I'm here in a different capacity tonight, and that is I'm here as a representative of the Perry County Economic Development Corporation. Some, not long ago, all the members that, we are in the process of changing the leadership there. Not long ago, all of the members of that board resigned, and at this point in time, we have three members. I'm the acting president. Audra Hunter is the treasurer. And Brian Peters is a member of that committee as well, or that board. A long time ago, some of you are probably more familiar with this than I, the business campus was put here in Penn Township. And we see that not much has happened in 10 years, I would say, about 10 years. And so we, in the process of change of leadership, we really want to change that direction. And so we're in the process of doing a number of things to change that. But in the meantime, there's somewhat of a financial constraint that we're having. And that is, you each received a thing, I think you received a copy of a letter.
Yes.
Okay. And that letter is to request from you for that campus for a period of five years, tax abatement, so that we can avoid the action of bankruptcy. I don't like to say that, because that implies that there is that possibility. But we have legal fees and management of the park that has to take place. And the funds that are there right now are insufficient to last indefinitely. And so we're trying to take action first, better understand exactly what can go in there. And the restrictions have been placed upon it. And we're also involved in a reevaluation of that with PETA, which has a loan on that property right now. They have conceded some time ago to not, for us not to make payments until such time as we sell property. But we look into the taxing authority to consider abating the taxes. And I think it's, this year, I think it's $317.51, and that's for the 2015-16 period. We're looking for that for five years. And in that period of time, we expect to start making progress towards filling the campus. And that's the objective. It's an investment in the community. I don't think the campus itself, sitting there, is really helping us unless we can get some businesses in there, get some family-sustaining jobs, and change the impact on the community. With that, you have any questions?
Yes, I read that letter with interest. I guess I have one question. Is there a similar letter submitted to the county, the school board, for taxing?
Yes. And Brian came and presented that to the county. And I forget the date, in October.
October 13.
13.
Is the school board.
We're going to be presenting it to the school board. Now, they've already received their letter. Everybody received the letter. But we're coming to be able to answer any questions and present what we're trying to do.
Curious to see their response.
Well, I can't speak for the rest of them. But, you know, we're here. And I want to tell you, I, for one, I think two years ago, I think the campus was definitely headed to bankruptcy. I think it's a wrong message. I don't think that'll benefit the community. I don't think it'll benefit the county. And I think it'll leave a big black eye on any future help we would want to get from the state in the area of economics. So I don't know if you have any questions for our treasurer? But I'm sure.
Small town in Penn Township, if you really want to save some money, you need to get that help from the other two agencies.
You're right. We figured it's going to take all three.
It's going to take all three.
Yes.
And I would hope that all three would do that together. That would be my wish for the residents and everybody, that that's how it has to take place. It's not a bad idea, don't get me wrong. Nobody sat at this meeting and said, if I was a young person, by golly, had a business enterprise in my mind, I would go to a business campus. The lots are right, the infrastructure's there, the electric's there, the sewer's there, the water's there. The prices are right. And I can never believe that it's set here this long and hasn't moved.
Well, that's the other thing that we're looking at, is are we marketing it properly? And there's just a number of questions. But I will tell you, over the three years that I've been looking into this, it's taken a lot of effort to just figure out what the heck is in the documents. And Brian can vouch for that, and probably Audra too. The people who made lots of money, I think, were the attorneys. And I don't want to knock the attorneys. It appears in all the documents that they were very much engaged in the beginning. But at some point, some point, it seemed like the energy faded, and the efforts were withdrawn. So we'd like to re-energize that. I've sat out there at the campus on occasion, just looking at it and thinking about how many jobs we might have, and what difference that would make to, if we had 100 jobs, we had 500 jobs, what difference would it make? It would make difference to every one person and their family. That's the difference.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
And if I may say, you know, with being on the board, you know, we do have potential life right now to the campus, meaning that we do have several prospects that are looking at the campus, which is a very positive thing in our township and in our county. We just have to get some of the legality things taken care of and clarity taken care of before we can proceed. But it seems like, right now, that we do have a very good prospect in bringing another business into that business. The other thing I'd like to say too, just to encourage the boards, as with the school board and the county commissioners, is that this is a small investment. Because once we start getting that park, and we determine to get that park built, that the return is going to be much, much greater than the little bit of money right now we're asking from the township, a little bit more from the county, a lot more from the school board, okay? But the other thing is too, is that after Monday's meeting, I was approached, I don't remember the individual's name, but she advised me that there is, if we can even put this in the newspaper, that there is actually rural development loans out there, 20-year loans, to help start or increase your, redevelop your business and grow your business. So there is actually rural grants out there for Perry County. So if there's any businesses that are interested, there is loans out there, very low-interest loans, 20-year loans. I'll get the information and try to make that more clear, what those loans are and have to obtain. So, lot of potential.
And we're busily engaged getting the board fully staffed again. And with that, we hope to be able to push forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Next would be Audra Hunter.
Actually, I'm the treasurer of the corporation. I'll just reiterate everything.
I'm your agenda, so I recognize you. Thanks for coming.
Cici.
The only thing I'd like to say is thank you for starting the training project.
Thanks, Cici. Give us a break. We'll be back. We've got everything there ready to finish.
And I can tell you that that plate does carry water.
It's got to be full.
It's pretty full.
Pretty full. We'll pump it up.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Bob Gaus? Linda Gaus? Susan and Floyd Smith? Carolyn? We're on later, if that, unless you want to talk now.
Yeah, who want it this time?
Mr. Binner?
Nothing now.
Bob?
No. Come to see what happened, thanks.
Lee?
Not this time.
He's gone. Jesse?
Not right now, thank you.
Charlie Wise?
Represent the fire company, Duncan.
Okay. John Holman?
Yes.
You don't have to come up.
I have some documents I'd like to give to the supervisors if I may.
I'm just trying to save you time from squeezing through.
These documents support the issue I'm going to address this evening.
So what was I saying?
Holman, Joe Will, and I am. The reason for me being here is twofold. One is to offer assistance, and the other is to make you aware of an issue with your police department. The issue with your police department involves Officer Goodling, who responded to a call at Concora January of this year, and Chief Pickles, whom I contacted subsequent to that occasion. The letters I have given you are some of my communications with federal and state authorities. Perry County officials have failed to obey state and federal laws regarding long-term care residents' rights. During the 18-month investigation conducted by myself and retired federal criminal investigator John McTernan, we were advised by several attorneys. We have been advised that we suspect criminal activity is legal for us to record those conversations. The residents' rights at Concora have been violated. And the result of those violations is Perry County and the state of Pennsylvania are under investigation by the U.S. Justice Department. Perry County is also under investigation by the Pennsylvania Department of Health. The Perry County District Attorney has given us a verbal ruling that the residents of Concora have grounds for a lawsuit. Had Perry County obeyed state and federal laws, these investigations and lawsuits would have been avoided. The actions of your police department contributed to these investigations. I'm going to read a section of the report of our investigation concerning your officer. Next, we went to visit Jean Wagner. Nurse Jones interrupted the visit and told us she was going to make another phone call. A short time later, Officer Goodling of Penn Township Police Department confronted us as we left Wagner's room. Officer Goodling and Nurse Jones were both right outside the door. I believe they were listening to our conversation with Wagner. Officer Goodling advised us that if we did not immediately leave Concora, he would arrest us for defiant trespass. I explained to Officer Goodling that I had written permission, and the residents had rights to request me to visit. Officer Goodling was not interested in my explanation and the residents' right. He said, quote, "I am 110% right about this Pennsylvania code regarding the residents' rights." He then advised me if I returned to Concora, I would be arrested for defiant trespass. I complied with Officer Goodling's request and left. Because Officer Goodling was not interested in the state and federal law guaranteeing long-term residents' rights, and said he was 110% right about residents' rights, I spoke to Chief Pickles about the residents' rights, and also about a letter that was written to me from the Law Office of Capouzi and Alder. Capouzi and Alder represent Concora Nursing Home. The letter was copied to Chief Pickles. The letter written by Attorney Parno of Capouzi and Alder is a complete fabrication. We have incontrovertible evidence disproving his portrayal of our behavior at Concora. Parno's violation of state law declaring the residents incompetent in the letter he provided will be part of our lawsuit. I asked Chief Pickles if his officer would swear in court that the letter was an accurate portrayal of our encounter with Goodling. He said he would. The letter is a complete lie, and my advice is that the supervisors discuss this directly with Goodling. As a result of your police actions, we have asked for federal law enforcement to intervene in Perry County, which is now being reviewed by the U.S. Attorney. Your police are part of the elder care law task force and should be educated on the law regarding long-term residents. I have not found anyone in the state of Pennsylvania who is well-versed on that law. Myself and McTernan would be glad to provide the law so your officers can be educated. I asked our attorney what we should do if your police department arrests anyone for visiting Concora, violates and continues violating the residents' rights and the visitors' rights. She said, "Let them make an arrest, and I will take it from there." I am asking that you have your police stand down at Concora when visits are made at Concora, and you educate your police on elder law so they can be an effective member of the Perry County Elder Law Task Force and also avoid a lawsuit. I'm going to provide you with a copy of the report that was sent to state and federal authorities, along with all the exhibits. If you have any questions, I would like to answer them for you.
Pass this off to our solicitor for review. Thank you. Next on the agenda.
Joy Holman? Joy?
Yes, hi. I came today because I am a registered nurse. You know, for about 25 or 30 years, I've been working as a nurse. I've worked in different things, but the main thing is with long-term care in nursing homes. The fact is that there have always been resident rights. It's a part of the Concora policy, as well as the other nursing homes I've worked at. If you consider that you don't agree with that, then there are landlord-tenant rights in the sense that somebody that's elderly that lives there is paying either rent privately or through their insurance company. So either way you look at the law, they have a right to have visitors. And in the instance of the police telling my husband, as a minister, that he could not visit people to provide spiritual support or whatever, that is why we're bringing the issue before you, because you do have a way to retrain or correct the situation. So if there are questions from that viewpoint as to why the nursing home did that, or why we are coming to you, then today's the time probably to ask the questions.
Thank you.
Jim, Fickle? Stanley?
Where is our solicitor?
Our solicitor at the present time, I was at a meeting last night, and I got a phone call from the individual who was there also, said he met with him earlier, said he's got walking pneumonia. And he called in this morning to Helen. I had that information late last night from a friend that he passed along to me. Said he was with him, and he said it was pretty sick. And that's all I could tell you, Stanley.
Thank you.
That's it? Luke? Craig?
The first is that we successfully won a bid from the County of Perry. Thank you, Mr. Rudy. And the county commissioners on a generator, 100 KW generator, is currently in the courthouse to be installed at our station as a means of backup electric and as a support for any evacuation purposes and shelter purposes that the township may see fit. As you're aware, in the past, we've been used both for the borough and Penn Township as an evacuation site, as well as Stonebridge Health and Rehab. We're also a backup operations center for the Pennsylvania State Police barracks in Newport in the event of a disaster. So that was kind of the final piece of the puzzle, not having the backup electric that we've secured. That is in support of, or in support by Wheatfield Township. They allocated $15,000 of their $22,700 contribution in 2015 for the purchase, transport, insulation, so on and so forth of the generator. We hope to have removal at the county. It's going to require some expert work by the Heim Company. The company is actually going to donate some of the materials and the labor to do so, as well as some contacts that we have to kind of minimize that cost. That's shooting for November, working around hunting seasons and such, to get it installed, or move to our station, and then start the installation process from there. So we're looking forward to getting that done before the coldest part of winter, and hopefully have that, not need it, but hopefully have it ready to go. Second item is a letter as you're considering your budget for 2016, a request for consideration by the Board of Supervisors as you prepare that document. I know we're moving quickly into budget season if we're not already there. And your current contribution is a $15,000 allocation, typically approved at your October meeting and then paid sometime in November. We're requesting an increase of 25% to $20,000. Puts you a little bit closer to Wheatfield's contribution. We're going to request a similar contribution from Duncan Borough. We're in a situation where frankly, our cash flow is terrible. We've taken on the non-emergency transport service and are trying to supplement that revenue. However, we're having some challenges with all the many changes in health care, depending at the federal level and the state level. We have a new EMS act that's fully gone into effect as of this past April. They've been incredibly detrimental to the operation of EMS agencies in the county. As I think you're aware, Eckersburg went out of service in 2013, Marysville went out of service in April. We've communicated many of these concerns with elected officials. However, you know, the Department of Health, the Bureau of EMS, has been pretty unresponsive. They haven't been terribly helpful. Our regional agency, or the Emergency Health Services Federation, has been responsive, but unfortunately, it seems their hands are tied at the state level. So we're experiencing a lot of challenges, and I think we're going to see more agencies in the county close. You know, you're going to see more agencies that are unable to provide service. We are presently, you know, covering for some of the Marysville load. Again, that's the 40 calls or so, the lower end of Penn Township. And I think we're handling the calls. We're, again, no first-out fails. Trying to supplement the income is the non-emergency side, and there are so many nuances when it comes to Medicare and Medicaid, paying on a fee schedule that doesn't even cover the cost. We met with our billing company Tuesday yesterday morning and increased our rates pretty significantly to be more on par with agencies similar to ours. We were low, and we hadn't done a rate increase since 2011. It's not ideal to do that, you know, the money isn't always there. And when we're dealing with people that don't have insurance or aren't able to make the payments, it becomes even more cumbersome to kind of try to collect that. So I believe we're doing what we can on our end. In that letter, we specifically indicate if there are specific clauses or specific parts of our operation you'd like that money to go to, that's fine. Dedicate it wherever you'd like. I think, you know, our numbers are pretty expansive and pretty detailed in the reports that you received, the 17-page report, in fact, this year for 2014. Be happy to answer any questions on that. I do have a lot of the billing data as presented by Cornerstone Admin Systems in New Cumberland as far as return, as far as billing payer breakdown between Medicare, Medicaid, private insurance, and so on. insurance, and so on. So we've been, you know, trying to make the cuts where we can, trying to do some improvements. We're working with the Bank of Landisburg to do a refinance to help improve cash flow on the property, also to do some upgrades to our HVAC system, which should, in the long term, save some money for fuel oil and such. So if there are any questions regarding that, I'd be glad to answer those. The second item, I spoke to the Chief of Police yesterday. I sent a series of emails, two emails, regarding two incidents that happened within a few days of each other. And again, some concerns that I think the Chief was aware of, and their patient safety, crew safety, and also his officer's safety. The guts of the conversation yesterday, I believe, were, you know, we've got to work together, and I don't think there's any dispute to that. I think that's absolutely critical. And our concern is that these situations, both, could have ended very differently. And we're, you know, we're very concerned when we're working two-member crews at 1:00, 3:00 in the morning, whatever the case may be. Both incidents were in Penn Township. They were not Duncan and Borough incidents, that someone's going to get hurt. You know, there were some concerns with illegal search and seizure and constitutional rights that the Chief brought forth. One of the instances was an intoxicated fall victim in Penn Township who became combative with our female crew member in the back of the ambulance on the way to the hospital, had been combative on the scene, but had calmed down upon loading. Upon arrival at the hospital, upon transfer of a weapon, a loaded Smith &amp; Wesson pistol was found in his waistband. That weapon was secured by the hospital staff ultimately. I reported the incident reports that I received from our crews, both of them, immediately to the Chief, requested a response back. My preference is always email just for documentation purposes. Didn't hear anything back from either of them. You have the entire series there. Until yesterday, when I got the phone call, I called him back probably an hour and a half after he left me a message, and we discussed it. I'm hopeful that there was at least some counseling or some consideration by the officer, the officer, and Officer Cavanaugh on both instances, and that those concerns will be taken a little more seriously next time, perhaps. During the course of the conversation, your Chief of Police made what I determined to be a puzzling accusation, and he told me that both me and our crew were in violation of HIPAA. Well, I'm pretty versed in HIPAA and have been since it was rolled out by the federal government, and it's the Health Insurance or Health Information Privacy Act, and it's about health information. And the key term in HIPAA is the Patient Health or Protected Health Information, PHI. I indicated, as our nurses in the crowd know, I'm sure, that that pertains to the patient's identifiable information and anything that's diagnosable, anything that's medical history or current medical condition. Reporting that a weapon was found, both to Officer Cavanaugh and then to the Chief subsequent to that, was certainly not a violation of HIPAA. So I've provided the definitions as provided by the Pennsylvania Department of Health and Human Services for your Chief to review, and also what does PHI Protected Health Information mean for your Chief to review. By no means am I an expert on HIPAA, but I deal with it every day as our privacy officer. I've taken numerous and numerous hours of classes on the subject, and I did not appreciate the accusation that that was a HIPAA violation. I don't think that's his area of expertise. He wasn't even aware that the Act 37 of 2009 requires that no weapons, except by those acting in official law enforcement capacity, are carried on ambulance. So there's not, I don't think, I only think it's a crime code matter, a Title 18 matter, but I do believe there's a violation of law by this patient in having the weapon in our ambulance. So above and beyond that, you know, he was legally able to have the weapon, you know, it was a registered weapon, from what I understand. My concern was strictly our patient and crew safety. As always, thank you for your support. Thank especially the residents of the township for their ongoing support as well. Should there be anything you need from me, please let me know.
Craig, we do have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
With the EMS Act.
Yes.
You said there was a lot of changes and updates in that. Was there mandates in there?
Certainly.
Were they funded mandates or unfunded mandates?
Absolutely unfunded.
Absolutely unfunded.
Absolutely unfunded.
Okay. I really think you got an audience tonight to speak to Mr. Teplitz after the meeting, hopefully, to be able to address a lot of these unmandated, the unfunded mandates that are coming out of the state and federal government. Really does hurt our communities and our municipalities.
In reference to that, I'll also offer that presently, we have seven vehicles, four ambulances, all licensed by the Department of Health, two QRS quick-response vehicles, two wheelchair vans. Two wheelchair vans doubles as a quick-response vehicle, kind of a multipurpose vehicle. At this moment, three of those vehicles are out of service. One is a 2000, one has 208,000 miles on it, it's a licensed ambulance. We're going to remove it from our license. We don't have the money to replace it or repair it. At 14 years old and 208,000 miles, it has a bad rear end. It's going to be $5,000 to $6,000 to repair it, and it's not worth putting the money into it. We have a 2004 transport van, it's a wheelchair van that we bought just over a year ago, used from a vital response to the company that Tim and Tricia Mench previously had. And the intention with that, again, was to supplement the emergency revenue and supplement the township support that we get from Penn and Wheatfield to try and pay our bills. And that vehicle has a blown motor. Third vehicle's our QRS, it was a 2002 Ford Explorer, has 147-ish thousand miles on it. That was donated to us by a former employee of the organization for the purpose of having the quick-response service and having a four-wheel-drive vehicle. That vehicle was out of inspection at the end of August and requires probably a couple dollars in repairs. It's still, I think, salvageable, but we simply don't have the funds to repair it and get it inspected and get it back in service. So as we stand right now, we've got three vehicles, two of which are licensed vehicles, out of service. And one of them at least won't come back into service, and the other two, until we have some funds to do those repairs and get those vehicles in service, won't be back either. So we're not out of business. We're not telling you we're going to disconnect service. We're not going to tell you we're going to discontinue service. But I think that we've got to be very careful and mind everything very consistently to try to move forward. Hopefully, the changes in our rates and some changes in our submission of patient care reports to our billing company on a more consistent basis helps with that. But cash flow historically for us in the end of the third quarter, where we are right now, beginning of the fourth quarter, is a challenge, and the Penn Township contribution is a huge help for that because it comes typically in November. We had asked for it two years ago early. We were denied, just to keep consistent with your budgeting, processing calendar, and that was for a repair of the 2008 ambulance. That's our newest vehicle, seven years old. So we're trying to do what we can to not buy $150,000 brand-new vehicles, to manage and kind of band-aid what we have while, you know, same time keeping it safe. But it's becoming harder and harder. I think you'll see two agencies at least in this county within the next months to short period of time, short period of years, probably out of service as well for similar concerns. I know Sherman's Dale is in the process right now of kind of regrouping, coming up with some budget numbers to go to Carroll Township and Ryde Township to look for money. There's a group, a group in Marysville meeting on a weekly basis, trying to see if they can fund putting the ambulances back in service in Marysville. That's a challenge. They're looking at a $400,000 cost to do so. Our budget right now is about $550,000. We're probably going to be right around $500,000 at the end of the year. But again, that's with having a larger facility, having the building and the fundraising income, Monday, big bingo, Sunday dinner, so on and so forth, but also having the non-emergency transport service, which is five days, six days a week. So we're trying to do a weekend, and we ask for your support moving forward.
To my understanding, that there's some changes coming to emergency preparedness, as in new radios are going to be required?
That's correct.
Is that funded?
That's yet to be determined. The county has an out-for-bid, has an RFP out-for-bid right now due, I think, the 30th of October, and it's to then be, bids are supposed to be open the 2nd of November at their regular meeting.
Net covers fire departments?
Fire, ambulance.
And police.
And police. Basically replaces the system. The system that's currently in use is from the 1970s. The pagers that we carry aren't made anymore. The new series, this is the five series, the six series, they don't make in our frequency band. There's no encoding, there's no digital access. It's not P-25, which is the Federal Communications Commission Public Safety Standard for radio equipment. It's not P-25 capable, so it's very outdated. They've worked for several years now and tried to get parts, you know, rebuild parts, you know, ship used parts around the country to try and band-aid the system that have the county. Commissioners, I think, recognize that, but the price tag originally projections were $7 to $9 million for the system. We're right in the $4 to $5 million range right now. Blaine Fire Company, partnering with the county, received a grant from the Federal Department of Homeland Security in the amount of $982,000. But with that, there's a 10% match. The 10% match, we're hopeful, is going to come from the Commissioner's office, from some money that they've, according to your Deputy Director, they've been setting aside for years. I don't want to put you on the spot.
Sounds like a good idea.
But, you know, we're hopeful that that's, I mean, that's 25% of the cost. There's, I think, a grant pending with the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police Association to fund the law enforcement side of that. And if that 10% match, you know, that $98,000 and change is, has to be spread out over the 10, I'm sorry, 20 agencies, you know, there's still some costs there. There's probably $5,000 to $6,000 cost there that we're simply not prepared for. So we're hopeful that those monies are paid at the county level for the equipment, but it's going to replace pagers, portable radios, mobile radios, house siren equipment, so on and so forth, for the fire companies, EMS agencies, the Sheriff's Office, and the law enforcement agencies in the county. So we're hopeful that continues to move forward, but that's been something you've all heard at these meetings, I think most of the room has heard before, you know, that the radio system is deficient. So we're hoping that moves forward, but that's just one of those things, we're not sure if we're going to have a matching piece yet.
If you would, get in contact with me in the next couple of days. PSAT's Quarterly Magazine came out, and the whole, a good portion of the magazine dealt with emergency preparedness and the challenges. I think there's some things that might be helpful in helping you restructure.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Craig, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
A realistic question. Say I'm coming home and I'm involved in an accident close to home, and I get an injury, someone calls an ambulance on the outside, you guys show up, and I'm carrying a permit concealed weapon. You load me in there. Do you have the right to search me, or how do you expect, by golly, for that to be brought forward, that you don't have to deal with that? You wouldn't see it, you wouldn't know it. Where's that responsibility lie?
That's not a question that I think there's a clean answer.
Okay. Would, so, are you telling me you don't have the right to search that individual or frisk that person to see whether he has a firearm or not?
As part of our assessment, you know, we should be doing a head-to-toe assessment. The scenario that I'm referring to, and I'm assuming you would be compliant and sober.
What's that?
I'm assuming you would be both compliant and sober.
Well, if I was not a little goofy, I might not beg, and there's a lot of people telling you that's normal here.
Okay.
But you, or does that police officer, and I'll ask Tim, if he's called upon the scene, does he have a right to search that person?
Not if there's any posing danger or anything, but for us.
And that was the discussion we had yesterday, was that, and I said that.
So how do you control that?
I don't know. What I'm asking for with this is that you're all aware of it, number one.
Okay.
But number two, that, you know, maybe our crews, in conjunction with the police department, if they're present, are a little more cognizant of, that could have been, could have showed what, but, you know, it could have been a much uglier scene, you know, someone could have gotten hurt. And, you know, in this particular situation, the individual was injured, he had some level of intoxication, you know, at 1:00 in the morning or whatever time it was, and, you know, there's kind of some extenuating circumstances. I would think that, you know, someone that's impaired, someone that is acting out, again, I'm assuming you're compliant. I'm assuming you're not going to be fighting with it, and I'm assuming you're not going to be intoxicated when you wreck your vehicle. I'm hoping you don't wreck your vehicle, Henry. But in this particular situation, this gentleman was not compliant, and he was not sober. So those, to me, are two concerns. It was in the act of trying to assess the patient, get his personal information, you know, verify that the injury he was complaining of was, in fact, his only injury, that the crew member was struck or was attempted to be struck on the way to the hospital. And again, there was no further attempt to agitate him, just let's get him to the hospital where it's a secure environment, there are more people, there's more support, it's lit, you know, we're not bouncing down the road. And upon arrival at the hospital is when the weapon was found. I will not claim for one second it was illegal for him to own the weapon, to have the weapon. He had every right in the world to have that weapon. There is a law, Pennsylvania Act 37 of 2009, the EMS Act, that restricts the use of a weapon in the back of a licensed emergency vehicle, emergency medical services vehicle, except by a person acting in official law enforcement capacity. So that law was violated by having a weapon. Are we going to be a little more careful? Is that crew member going to be a little more careful to ask some of those questions and say, "Hey, if there's anything on you that you shouldn't have with you or that you don't need with you, probably leave it at home"? Chief used the example of a necklace, you know, that, you know, we don't want to see it stolen, we don't want to see any accusations made against our crew or against the hospital of losing that piece of jewelry. And also, it doesn't, you know, it's one more thing to have to be removed if there's X-ray or imaging work that needs done. So, you know, I think we're going to be more cognizant of it. I'm hopeful that that message has been relayed to the police officer in question and maybe to the entire department, that, you know, we're trying to do a job and we're trying to keep your residents and the passersby safe and provide a level of service. We don't want to see our people hurt.
Very hard thing to do.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's all, that was my only question.
Thanks, sir.
Next.
Well, Jody?
Not at this time.
Okay. Then anyone else?
I have a prepared statement. After last month's meeting, I purchased a tape and I listened to it several times. I heard the personal issue that was described as a rumor and the rumor that was made a township issue. The personal issue was supported by the solicitor. The personal issue was staged at the meeting to publicly ambush me. At no time did anyone ever question me or give me the opportunity to talk. Mr. Fox was criticized for not going directly to the chairman, but the chairman found it unnecessary to come to me. I was tried, convicted, and sentenced without an opportunity for defense. I move, I call, Penn Township Justice. There's obviously an issue with me from this township, and it maybe has something to do with EMS or the PCRA. So I'm going to walk out of here tonight, and I'm not coming back ever again, but before I do...
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
I have one of these for everybody here. This is a personal issue with me, and I really sincerely hope that you take one and pass If you want to know what that's all about, maybe Mr. Holman's the person to answer because he knows what are township issues. Thank you, and good night.
Yes, and I'll be glad one more time for to address that particular issue. The issue was brought up on the night that I missed a meeting. Brian McGuire announced that there was a death in my family. And then I get approached on the outside later on to my family, where they were asked, by golly, I understand your dad missed township meetings. And in that statement, that they believed that, they tried to make a liar out of Mr., it was a township issue, he put the statement out, and the individual approached my family that I was dying of cancer, that that's why I missed a township meeting. I took issue with when he done that. He upset my family, my grandchildren, my kids, who didn't know, thought that I was withholding something from them. When I questioned Mr. Fox about it, he apologized, he made a mistake, and I wanted to know where the information came from, where he got his information. I couldn't help that he named Lester Nace. And where it got started, I'm sure that both of them, or whoever's involved with it, wished they'd have never brought it up, but it became a township matter when they said that I missed two meetings because I was sick when I had deaths in my family. And I took offense to that. If someone wants to pay for the physical, I'll go to any doctor you want. I find them pretty good health yet. But my family didn't deserve that. Brian didn't deserve that, especially when the people that made the accusations sat here and heard it being told at this meeting. Was it not announced, Ellen?
Yes, it was.
Yes, it was. That's all I have to say of that. I'm sorry that people got caught up in that, that they got brought out that way, and someone referred to somebody else that that's where they got their information. I've known Carl Fox a long time, considered him a personal friend, but could not believe that he went behind my back and upset my family that bad that day, when there was no truth to it at all. That? Next, Ellen.
Anyone else? I guess that's it.
Okay.
I'd like to make something here. If this information could be relayed to Mr. Nace Senior, that I would never want to see any one of our citizens not allowed to be engaged in our township or in our township meetings. So I'm sorry that Mr. Nace is to the point of being upset where he feels like he has been attacked or what it may have been. But again, we should always afford our citizens the opportunity to bring forth their voice because dang it, it's constitutional for the people, other people, and by the people of the United States of America, everybody here, and all of our men and women that have died defending our Constitution. If that is not allowed to be upheld or not, then they have died in vain. They have died, remember. If you want to know our Constitution, I encourage you to go online and learn our Constitution and learn to defend our Constitution, because in public forums and public meetings, we are allowed to be heard because we are allowed to voice our voice. And the minute government stifles that and threatens that, then you know what? That's called tyranny. That's called tyranny. And our Constitution says we are to be defended against tyranny. Thank you.
And I gather from that you felt that I spoke out, Brian, by golly, that I don't have that right. Everybody had the right, and I had... have that right. Everybody had the right and I had the right to defend myself in this issue. There was nobody trying to be stymied, held back, or kept back from anything.
You accuse people, Mr. Holman.
Other than the issue, other than the issue, Brian, other than the issue, they tried to take the township and drag them into something that was not so. And I have the right to defend myself as well as a supervisor and my family.
You accused people of not coming to you and talking to you first.
I did not accuse nobody.
Yes, you do. You accused...
I did not.
Yes, you do accuse people in this room of not coming and talking to you first, not talking to you first. That man, did you give him a right that you gave Mr. Fox? No, you did not.
I asked to talk to him. He met me in the hallway afterwards. He wasn't here after the meeting.
After he was publicly ridiculed, you didn't even go to him first. You went to Mr. Fox first, did you not?
No, I did. Mr. Fox came to me.
No. You went to Mr. Fox and talked to Mr. Fox about coming to that meeting?
No, I did not.
You said you did.
Now, wait a minute. Mr. Fox, by golly, I had that conversation by phone and he said, I'll be at the next meeting.
So, you talked to him prior?
No. When I contacted him about the thing. Carl Fox volunteered to come to that meeting. I didn't ask him, Jesse.
Did you afford the opportunity to Mr. Nace before the meeting and talk to him like you did Mr. Fox? That's when I'm standing, sir.
And the issue was...
Like you said, it was staged.
Okay. You see it your way, but I have the right to defend myself and my family as well. And this board of supervisors that announced what it was about.
And actually, to think what it was, it wasn't that meeting. It was a meeting that you missed where there was no reason given that, no, is there really need a reason to be given? So, it wasn't just that issue. It was the two meetings you had missed that was in question.
And a month in between with the same situation, a month later.
But I just want to make it clear, it wasn't just that incident. There was two. So, listen, we're going to make the record clear on things on everybody, like we know you're going to do.
There was two meetings that I missed.
Yeah, but you just got done saying it was only one meeting that was in question.
Well, I said there was two meetings that I missed.
Okay, we're going to have to listen to this tape tonight also.
There was two meetings, by golly. If you go back to last month when that incident happened, I brought it up. I was accused of missing two meetings. You'll find out what was in the board last month.
Yes, in the last meeting, but you just now said tonight it was only one meeting that was in question. Actually, it was two.
There was two. That is correct. That's why I missed. And that was settled to meetings the month before. Okay. Anybody else, Helen? Invoicing expenditures. Before you. Yeah, before you, the invoiced expenditures for rejection or approval.
Other than the normal bills, we made the first payment afford for our workers' comp premium.
Okay. I hear a motion to approve it.
If I make a motion, I can see several motions.
Okay. I'll make a motion to reapprove the invoiced expenditures. I hear a second.
I second the motion.
Okay, motion made with second. All those who favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so are...
Aye. Except I abstain from voting on check number 28656 because I'm related to the EPE and check number 28670 because I'm temporarily employed by our two associates.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Have before you the treasurer's report for rejection or approval. Anything unusual to...
Yes, we received our annual payment from the state for the fire and fire and for the state aid pension.
Right here, a motion to approve the treasurer's report subject audit.
I make that motion.
Okay, motion made to approve the treasurer's report subject audit. All those who favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so are...
Who's second?
I second.
Okay. I missed it.
Minutes, August 26, 2015, township minutes and the Ag Security Minutes. I make a motion to reapprove the Ag Security Minutes that presented for August 26.
I second the motion.
Motion made with a second. All those who favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, so are. We have before us the August 26 minutes of the regular township meeting for approval or rejection. I have before us those particular minutes with an exception on it. It's a minor part of the minutes and it's in the minutes. There was executive session held today because parts of what was in the last month's minutes was personnel issues that should have not come forward to the floor. And an executive session today with the ones that were accused and in that particular police report, it was unfounded that the accusations made against the police officer was, are unfounded. And therefore, I want that made as part of the minutes, that those have been unfounded for this month so that they can be approved and noted.
What were the accusations?
It was those statements that Supervisor Peters stated received several phone calls informing him here in Penn Township. Police officer telling residents of township in Duncan and Marysville boroughs, that Penn Township is eliminating all part-time police officers and will then have a five full-time officers. Same officer stated he will become police captain after Captain Carlson leaves Penn Township for employment as the chief of police of Silver Springs Township. Captain Carlson stated that was not true. And to get back to the crutch of it, there was an executive session conducted today by these three supervisors and the parties involved. And there was no finding that those statements were true. Therefore, these minutes can be approved as such, but those notes will be in this present month's meeting.
And also, I'd like to add that a part of that, there was said there was an investigation made, but it was an improper investigation because not everyone was spoken to that was involved.
Henry, I can tell you that I've heard an officer make that comment.
Pardon?
I've heard an officer make that comment. I've heard part of that comment being made. And that was that they were going to have five full-timers here. I did hear that part. Came from an officer here, not in the room today, but... I was not the only person present when that was said, too.
Okay. It's an unfounded thing, Lee, and that is exactly what it is.
Again, it's unfounded because it was not properly investigated.
You can say it's not properly investigated, but you can only take that personally, a personnel issue, first of all, should have been done in executive session and not out on the floor. And that situation here, you went into where you don't go and those statements should have never been made. There was a personnel issue in this department.
Correct. I understand that, but also, Mr. Holman, you're guilty also for bringing personal agenda to the floor, making it public before the township and the residents, subjecting residents to unnecessary embarrassment or shame. But also, if you go back and listen to those notes, part of that personal agenda also, which was staged, I do believe, and I think everybody here can vouch, that you threatened individuals with lawsuits if they did not come forth with that information.
I asked you, go ahead.
And I believe everybody in this room that was here can testify and confirm that fact.
Okay, and then I'll agree to one thing. I questioned Carl Fox and he said, well, I don't want to give up the information. I said, you could probably get sued or we'll get sued, Carl, for that information. And he yielded the information upon that statement. He yielded that statement upon that statement that I made to him.
So, a personal issue in a public forum.
It was personal. It was a township matter where they tried to make a liar out of Brian McGuire and the statement that was made that there was a death in the family, that there wasn't, that that's not why I missed. That is why I missed, a death in the family. My ex-wife, my kid's mother died, which maybe don't mean too much to other people.
Just want to make it very clear, if you're going to keep things on the record, that you also threatened. And it's really peculiar because I'm looking, I'm looking at this section here and I don't even see where you can state what I said and want to state the record to make it clear. I want to reset the record to that you did threaten citizens of our township with lawsuits because I don't see that in the notes either. You want to make sure my words are documented on these pages. Therefore, I want to make sure your words are documented on those pages and that you, that you use executive session to bully them.
And I think they're there.
Okay. That you sued, that you threatened to sue people? No.
Go back here quick. I don't know about everything you said there, but I will say, I did have, at lunch one day, an officer that worked part-time for this police department told us that they were going to have five full-timers here. The rest of it, I can't. And did I question Brian on it? Yes, I did.
And what was my answer to you? I have no knowledge of it?
Yes.
I have no comment. Is that correct, Mr. Wright?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. And the statement says, he said he received several phone calls. Maybe he did. Now, you're saying that you gave him that information.
Oh, I questioned him.
One of many.
I questioned it when I heard about it. Actually, my comment was, I think it's better questioned whether or not we keep a police department when he asked me about it.
And I said I have no knowledge of that?
And I was, Henry, I was not the only one sitting at that table when the guy said it.
I don't know how you can, you can ask Oliver Pickles here. He was here today. The three of us were here. Lee, it was unfounded. I wouldn't know how you would found it with all the rumors and all the stuff being out there. That part of it in the minutes.
How can you have found it?
I make a motion, I make a motion that we approve the minutes subject to that.
He said with the officer. He was with the officer. What part of that aren't you hearing?
He wasn't at the executive session today.
No, I wasn't there.
He was at, he heard that officer say what. So, maybe we should break and have an executive session and go into an executive session.
I make a motion one more time as to what I said originally in regards to that. Executive session was held today and it was unfounded that those statements that were said, including Captain Carson going to Silver Springs, the whole nine yards was unfounded. Call him for a second for approve those minutes as such.
And to include the statements that I've already made, that it's not unfounded and it was properly, was not properly investigated because apparently now all parties involved have not been spoken to. And now, we have a citizen that said they have firsthand account of hearing this information directly from the officer's mouth while in uniform in another, in another municipality.
Okay, motion made, call him for a second.
Repeat the motion, please.
I repeat the motion. There's a motion made for those statements there after the executive session was held today. The officer come forward, by golly, with everything, with the information that was there. Mr. McGuire, myself, and Mr. Peters was there, Officer Pickles, okay? It was unfounded that those statements that was put in the minutes last week out to the public. There's no founding that there was any truth to them.
There was no founding at that moment, but now there's finding because it wasn't properly investigated. So, therefore, a shoddy, shoddy investigation because this is staged, this is once, you know, public embarrassment, public shame, whatever you want to call it.
Say whatever you want.
That's the price you pay when you become a supervisor and it's all now community that you really care about this citizen. So, there isn't, should be no motion at all.
I didn't hear any of that from you today at all.
Well, no, because, no, I did. I asked, did I not ask if it was not... Okay, now it's up for discussion.
Motion made.
Now, it's up for discussion.
Motion made with a second.
Up for discussion. The discussion was, did I not ask in that, in that meeting if it was properly investigated?
And I think it was.
No, because the other party was not...
Pickles, you carry a hot rod?
The other officer, the officer did not question all parties involved. And now, that party is now speaking tonight.
It's in the executive session.
And it's in the executive session. That's correct. You're getting outside of it.
Well, you're getting outside of it. You're stating what was said in executive session. You just stated what was in executive session.
No decisions were made or anything. The question that is asked out there.
Okay, and you're saying it's unfounded. Well, it's not unfounded.
It is unfounded.
No, it's not because now we have a resident that said he was there and can testify to partial part of those statements. You know, whatever was said by other people that contacted who stopped me at the Perry County Fair or after the Centennial Parade in Duncan and when they saw me in the car and realized, oh, he's one of the supervisors. Let's go ask him, okay?
You heard every bit of testimony was there today, which stayed, stayed right there. Okay.
No, it was not properly investigated because it's not unfounded because we, now we have a witness. And then, you're telling me that this witness does not have any credibility in this statement? Mr. Wright?
Henry, if you don't want to believe me, that's fine. But if you want to call me tomorrow, I'll give you the other gentleman's name that was with us that day. You can talk to him. He's not here tonight.
So, now we have two witnesses.
I don't want to, I don't want to give his name out in the public. But if you call me, I'll tell you.
I think the term unfounded is inappropriate in the motion.
It was unfounded that there was any truth to those statements.
It doesn't matter if there's truth. Is there a basis of fact?
Yeah.
Is there a foundation for it?
Yes, I think there was. Jody?
Okay, so then how's it unfounded?
I won't be dormant here today. There wasn't.
That surprises me that Brian even seconded that. You have someone saying that they're bringing it forward, that they heard it with their own two ears. How is that, how is there not, that not factual?
I make a motion that the motion gets withdrawn until further investigation. Do I have a second?
There's already a motion.
You have to finish one motion before you start the second.
What's the upshot of all this? What condition is our police department in?
There's not a motion. There isn't any full-time. There's... There hasn't been any, any, any looking into any, any full-time, more than what we have now.
Two full-time plus part-time. There's nothing.
So, there's two full-time, how many?
Full-time, there were, I think, eight. Now, we're down to six.
So, you're not intending to make one full-time?
No, it's, but it's, but it's also, you know, it would be nice. I mean, we could, you know, we could explore that, but there's costs involved, too, that would increase the cost department. It's, it's not.
And to what you say, I find, I found it very hard to believe that we were going to have five full-timers, but he was proceeding forward.
And that may be something that, that somebody believes to be the way it should be. I mean, you know, but, but not, you know, we're not, we're not looking into it. I mean, it's, it's not, it's not feasible right now at all.
But that's not really the issue at hand.
Well, that the, that the statement was unfounded, that, that, no, that's not true. That's not what's happening.
No, the statement, no, that's not what's in question. It's unfounded by the comments that were made. You're saying that it's unfounded, you're saying it's unfounded because that you can't prove that the officer said that because his word is that he didn't say it. Now, we have foundation to the statement that he did say it and we have a citizen of our township and another individual that could come forth and make the same statement. So, there is foundation.
The only thing I could tell you, I don't know about that other crap that was with that, but I can tell you that he said that we're going to have five full-timers.
We're going to have five full-timers? Or that we're looking into five full-timers? Or that that would be...
We were going to have five full-timers.
You have a motion on the table.
Yeah.
Ma'am?
Is that something for discussion among all three supervisors, Mr. McGuire? Okay. May I be privy to that because I am one of the supervisors in this discussion? Thank you. Thank you.
Motion's been made with a second. Calling for the vote, all those of favor, give the consent of saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, silver.
No.
Okay. Lee, I would offer, if you have any information or anything like that, change that. You take it to the proper people.
You just tried.
I'm going to put another motion, I'm going to put another motion back on the floor to accommodate those that feel that it's been be further. Then, since the name's out there, I'll put a motion forward that you contact our department. And I'll ask for a second on the motion. I wanted to get that part right there, that what took place at the executive session today proved nothing. Now, you have a motion here that he wanted to continue the investigation, and I'm willing to allow that. But the thing that was on the floor today was what came out of the investigation for the executive session today. Okay?
That my statements were unfounded.
That's correct.
Okay. Which we've established that there is foundation.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll put it the forward of emotion, Lee. That that be allowed, or I would suggest or recommend you do that, okay?
Stop seeing me tomorrow. I'll, I'll give the guy a call and make sure he'll talk with you, but I don't think he has any problem talking with you. And I'll tell you anything I know. Which is basically what I told you.
Okay. Thanks, Lee. That's it.
You started a motion.
I started a motion by golly that recommended Lee do that. And I asked him for a second, that the, that the investigation be allowed to continue forward. There you are. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Okay, motion made with a second, all those favor, give the consent of saying aye. Ayes have it, so order. Okay, that concludes the minutes.
Yes.
Okay. Again, before you, the highway report. Usually like to have a little bit of good news, new news on our liquid fuel, new account mount. Thanks to the transportation bill, we're going to get $20,000 next year in our liquid fuel disbursement to this township. And that was the reason why when we purchased the last truck, figured that money was coming. That truck can be purchased without money, without that, and not affect our liquid fuels money for road paving every year. It won't change a thing. I'm glad to see that that has been the result of the very controversial transportation bill that's brought more money in this township for our liquid fuels. We've done extensive work on Linton Hill. We've raised the road to take out excessive slope on the sides out there. I met with Mr. Levine by golly to take a look at it before it was paved, to see whether Liquid Fuels man was satisfied with it. Recommended that we take some slope out of the road out there. So we brought modified in, put it in, rolled it in, raised the road. And out there, first thing this morning, see what the storm does to us. And all the water has went to where it belongs, in the right places, and our road didn't wash out. I am under the impression, I got to call him tomorrow morning. They're supposed to start October the 5th, Monday, but I believe that due to rain and et cetera, that, that probably won't happen, but I'll get a commitment from him. And we need that commitment and date to start so that we can notify all the individuals on that road, that that road will be paved, so that they can make plans to be able to get in and out. So let's hope that the weather gets good enough here to get that road stat and Rook Road. Not Rook Road, Spur Road's been prepped. Paving out there, we had some severe depressions in that. We filled them with modified, brought them up to grade, so that the tonnage within the bid by golly comes in to, to within its bounds. The road is paved, there will be guardrail put up out there at some very, very needed places that's been without for years, and for the first time we have a guardrail. I will say, we chipped an extensive amount of brush dropped off these days out here. We've had three days that kept track of it, three days of constant grinding and chipping brush to keep piles down. Then there's another pile out there again. There's a lot of time involved with that out there, but trying to keep that brush pile to a manageable level. The only problem, the biggest thing that you have is with underneath your brush, you find all kinds of things. Stumps that can't be chipped, stuffed for stuffed tires, anything that you can imagine is buried under that brush pile out there. And so the, that's one of the problems with, with that program out there. Started a drain line in Schoolhouse at Teeverum, been very hard digging. C.C. can attest, there've been some awful large rocks got out of there. I didn't think we were going to be able to get them with the backhoe, but we worked around digging on both sides and got them out. And got things closed up, waiting for the rain to come, and hope it soon gets over with here now. Rain in the paving, we will be back on that project as soon as whichever gets done first. The paving project will only be about a two-day project, and they'll be here and gone. And it's going to take, I figure, for the driveway to finish the catch basin, do the pouring and landscaping and refurnishing that road down there with modified where we've dug it up. I figure it's going to take the better part of another five full days to finish that down there. We've targeted and chipped roads at Fouts' Department's Cove Road, Schoolhouse, and Sawmill. Clean catch basins throughout the township prior to this storm and, and once before. Railroad repair will continue until the weather prohibits. And there's a huge oak tree on Allender Drive that is very rotten at the bottom. It stands within the township right of way. Like so many other ones out here, if it falls, it's going to get the neighbor's house. I don't normally get involved with something like that, but I will tell everybody here and now, I'm going to take 40-foot J.L.G. that I have, go over there and get up and take those limbs out, and ask my son to come down, hook a cable to that tree to pull it back in my field, saw it down before these people lose their house. It is not a good situation. In the future, you take a look what's coming at you future. There are hundreds of dead ash trees out here from the Emerald Ash Bore all along our township right of ways, that normally are living, stay there, and et cetera. You can expect an influx of them across lines, across roads in the upcoming years. They are decaying fast. Some of them are private property, but they're going to come down. A lot of them are back in there were prized ash trees. It's something that township's going to be faced with, where you're going to have power outages before of it. If people don't take them down on their own, you're going to, you're going to, you're going to have that. So you can be prepared to see that take place. As I always try to bring out, things that concern us, I have the name of it, just like a spotted lanternfly that I brought up, that we got in our newsletter in regards to it. We now have another one coming up through South America, that they don't have much to do with it, that has affected over a third of the tomato supplies in the world. And, and that, that is coming to the U.S. real quick. And the Agriculture Department don't know what they're going to be able to do about it.
What's it, Henry?
There's, there's a, another bug, a Z's Lee that's working into this country on the tomatoes. And, and they're, they're, at the present time, I watch all that, because all these things affect us around here, like, like the illness that's getting our walnut trees. We're soon not going to have black walnuts. They're being affected. We lost our ash trees, we lost our, our hemlocks due to that. Those things are important, because these things affect eventually our food supply and our cost of what we get on the table. Believe it or not, it's there. And so there's more of it, there's more of that blight and stuff that's really getting prolific, coming, that they don't know how to treat it.
It's interesting you brought that up. I was at a trade show today, and that was the topic of discussion. And they have some, they have some new strains of tomatoes out there that are working towards that. It's a late blight, and they are working, they found that it works pretty good against them.
That, that's here, that's not what's in the other country that hasn't arrived yet, but approached it through Mexico. This is a different thing.
But the blights they, they have.
This is, this is a pest. This is a bug. Is what it is. So I always try to throw those things in there, under that. We haven't heard anything on our new truck order, whether we're going to get that to the fall. But we have, we have enough vehicles and stuff out there, ready to go. We have salt put in out here again, and got our salt shed pretty well filled up. And trying to make sure that we have skid, and the price for the skid that they used last year, the people were up here, the same price, it's worked out, probably the same deal if you want to use it. So that's, and last year, we, due to the ice and whatnot, spent more money on salt and skid than we ever did in the last 10 years in this township. Just trying to keep it down. You don't have nothing to plow, you can't do nothing but put salt and cinders on. So that, I just wanted to give that report. I have nothing else, looking forward to getting that road paved and, and getting back to repairing roads. I will say that I got budget figures in here for what plan, whether the board follows through with it or not, for the rest of barracks out here, and for the continuation of Faculty Road down over the hill to Samuels. Those budget figures are here, are included in the road survey out here. It's for FP3 material, not the super paved. And the reason being, the barrack road out there has only ever had two small layers of chip over some, what you call it, was never paved very well, can't even maybe now get turned over to township, because it sure didn't meet township specs. So you use the FP3 on that, something that's flexible, something that'll move, the ground can freeze, and it falls, it'll go back together. Super paved, when it freezes and cracks, is forever cracked. And you can put a lesser amount on it. One of the best roads has been done for quite a while with the FP3, is the back of Look at Royer Drive. It's the only road I know that's been paved for as long as it has, that don't have a crack in it or show any signs of wear, and that was FP3 material. And that's what we're putting in, I would hear, on, on Linton Hill, because this is the first paving of it out there, the FP3 material. So the budget's within line with what we usually spend. And it would have to be put out to bid for those two roads. Those two roads are the next neediest ones that I see that should be, in my mind, that needs to be taken care of. And then, whatever they deem necessary to do afterwards is, is somebody else's decision.
Question?
Yes.
At last month's meeting, you said you were going to have the crew out at the end of Faculty Road to trim some weeds and brush to give us better site distance pulling out. I didn't see, unless weeds grew really good in this dry weather, I didn't see that anything was done. Is that still on the to-do list?
Okay, the worst one that we had was done down on, and I sent the crew out there, and they said that they didn't see it. They're at that, coming out on the east side of 274 was what I was referring to, okay? They did get the one that was down on Butcher Shop and Huffham, which was really bad, that that overhung there. They trimmed that all back. And they both, they come back and said that they had the site distance, they didn't see anything out there. Now, I didn't go back out and take a look at it, but I'm not passing blame off on them when it was, when I didn't get out there to take a look at it myself. Now, I was out to the lady's place out there about a bee's in a tree that she wanted us to do something about, and I got to go back out there to take a look at that and trim those branches back. And when we get that done, I'll take a look at that out there for you.
That was Faculty and Gambler, correct?
What's that?
Faculty and Gambler?
No.
No, Faculty and 274, right across from the Abundant Harvest Church.
Just, not in your defense, I did see them cut there on Faculty and 274 on my side. I did see where they did cut there.
Yeah.
Possibly they got the wrong corner.
That's what he's saying.
They may have gotten the wrong corner.
I know, I know that they were out there and said it was okay.
I know they cut, I know they cut some back, because I can see brush laying on the gutter side, you know, the dully side. So maybe they just cut the wrong side, I'm not sure, but I did notice that there was some trimming done on. I guess that would be the north side.
I would be looking north on 274, looking up towards the, the church here. And they, they were directed to do that, said that they, the site distance, and they thought, because everything was okay. So it would have to be on the opposite side of the road then. It would have to be on left-hand side pulling out on 274.
On that side, if you're headed out of town, on the left side.
On the left side.
It would be the south side of 274.
The south side, okay. I'll take a look at it there. I know that there's some tree obstructions in there, that those trees are not on township right of way. That's probably now, we can trim back some, but I've gotten a lot of trouble by golly cutting people's trees that they planted in it right of way and cutting limbs back. And they don't, they don't seem to like that, even though it's a hazard. That's, I'll take another look at it, see whether we can touch them. They're so far back, we're allowed to go, and so high, we're allowed to go, on cutting a private tree. Okay? I have one other thing on the highway report, the request that come out for to put a children's sign down here on the end of Firehouse back in there. I took a look at that today, we have those signs, and we have those posts, we'll put the speed limit signs up down there. But we cannot go back and put those children's signs on private property. That is beyond our township road, where the lady made the request for to have that sign put. That is back in a private lane, and I have no right to go in there, drive a post in, or put a sign in. I can put that children's play sign at the end of our township road, heading back to that private way, but where the place, the incident is, is a long ways off from that children's play sign. I went over that with Helen today and showed her exactly where that was, we can't hardly do that. But we're going to put the sign up the best we can, as close as we can, within the township right of way. Okay, Pen Township Planning Commission.
Brian, are you getting cold?
What's that?
Are you cold?
Oh, no, I just got that upper respiratory jumper.
Okay. Okay, first thing you have is a FEMA elevation lumbar. Mr. Richer is sending this into FEMA to ask them to change his elevation of his building. This is with a bunch of other townhomes that have already requested this. These townhomes were built on fill when the development was first done. We just need your okay to sign it and send it on out.
Have that information before you. I make a motion that we approve. The planning commission reviewed that application, it's all no issues with signing the form, that we signed the form. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Motion made with a second, all those with favor, give the consent of saying aye. Ayes have it, so order.
The next item is the Randall Moyer subdivision plan. Mr. Moyer is buying some property from his neighbor and adding it onto his. Both of these lots are non-conforming to begin with. This will reduce one of the lots of the non-conformants. If that makes sense. Oh. You're here.
They had a couple things, or they wanted to know about the impervious percentages on them, if we did this. Just want a coffee, one coffee.
They'll probably share.
This is what they wanted to know, what impervious was for existing, and what it would be for proposed. There is the original that, so. That was made on there.
You got the lot area proposal, the original lot areas?
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
Lot is there, so I plan. That's all it is. Nothing you're going to build on, nothing else?
No, I'm anyhow. I think he wiped them out.
Do we carry it?
No.
Oh, I didn't think so. Too much money in there. Okay. What's before you there was a very simple plan recommended by the Penn Township Planning Commission. Uh, subdivision plan was reviewed, very small lot. After discussion, proper motion, the planning commission voted and asked me to recommend the approval of the Randy Moyer subdivision plan contingent upon following items being completed. The applicant placed a note on the plan that two lots are existing, non-conforming lots. The applicant placed a note on the plan indicating the existing lot area, proposed lot area, and the impermeable coverage area for each lot, which has been done. Landowners required to certify ownership by signature on the plan. I believe all three of those have met.
You got it signed and sealed?
What's that?
No, it's not signed and sealed.
No, it's been signed, but.
No. So, that's a contingent.
That's, that's contingent, yes, Ellen. I mean, I know it's going to be signed.
Well, if he wants to record it, it is.
Landowners required to certify ownership by signature on the plan. Okay. So, you went to sign that, Randy, to verify that. Those being, those three items being covered, do I hear a motion to approve?
I'd like to make the motion, make the motion to approve, uh, the Randall Moyer subdivision plan with the recommendations of the Penn Township Planning Commission, and with the condition that they were sealed, they were sealed, correct?
Signed and sealed, yes.
Signed and sealed.
And all fees paid.
And all fees paid. All of them.
All of them. Every single penny.
Motion made?
I second the motion.
No, for a second, all those with favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it. So ordered.
Get it signed and back.
Thank you, Randy.
Yep. Am I getting it signed by my neighbor and I, bring it back to you?
Yes.
Just one copy, or are you going to sign?
Let me think. Mylar, me, county. How many copies are you going to want?
I have five here right now.
Well, that's, I need four. And then whatever you guys want for your.
Okay?
And one Mylar. Tell him one, one of the, my four is a Mylar. A Mylar. He'll know what a Mylar is.
Planning Commission has been working on, uh, some zoning ordinance amendments.
Yes.
Uh, they're before you here in review.
Yeah, these are not to be advertised or anything yet. They want you guys to look over them.
Your review, the supervisor's review.
Especially the solar portion, and any comments to give them back to them, because they're still working on the wind and another portion that they're looking at. And they like to get everything done at once, but they figured give you guys time to look at this. They can address any changes or comments before we send it up to the county and do all the other stuff that costs money.
Does the public get to see those, or do you need to write an L and D copy to them?
Right now, it's a draft.
It's a draft.
And do you, that against the wall, they give a draft, or it was marked as?
Normally, yeah.
Huh?
I mean, I have no problem with it.
I wouldn't have no problem with it, Danny. I wouldn't, I wouldn't know why not. It's a draft that the planning commission submitted for us to take a look at for review.
Okay.
Uh, to see what, if we have anything to add to it or take away from it.
And that's all I have on the planning commission.
Okay. Okay. Zoning report, Helen?
Uh, you have it in front of you.
Yeah.
Nothing major, just issue permits. Just to get occupancies.
Okay. So, is the enforcement officer report?
We just had one application for a new home for the septic.
Okay. Penn Township Park and Recreation Board report, kitchen update.
You're on.
Yes. Um, we have gone out and we've gotten four codes to redo the kitchen, which were approved, updated the kitchen, replacing cabinets, exhaust hood, reusing the stainless steel sink, pulling cabinets from the sink area. And the lowest quote that we got was $6,800 out of the four bids.
Yeah. They're asking to, if it's okay. They have the money.
They're asking permission to go ahead and do the kitchen.
Who'd you select?
No bid.
Huh?
Jeremy Fuller.
The lowest, they're Jeremy Fuller.
Okay, okay.
Is it Jerry or Jeremy?
Oh, it's Jeremy.
Jeremy.
Um.
Jerry.
It says Jerry on there, it's Jeremy.
Jeremy.
They have the money in their savings account, so they will not be touching any.
We won't touch any of our CDs that would be out of our savings.
Okay. I know you want to weigh that kitchen out there. I make a motion that we allow them to proceed for the amount of $6,800 to refurbish our kitchen out there.
I second.
Motion made with a second. All those with favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it. So ordered.
Thank you. In the second, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. In the summer, our Halloween party will be October 30th, about six to eight p.m. here at the township building.
Is that the day of Halloween?
No. The Halloween trick-or-treating is the 31st.
Okay.
Ours is Friday night.
Penn Township Municipal Authority?
I do not have anything.
Okay. Secretaries report?
Okay. First thing we have is the recycling we do with Dunkin' and Borough. For the first time in five years, the price will be going up. Our share would become $212.50. That's a $12.50 increase. It's going up for a total price of $425 a month. And we pay half, the Borough pays half for this. We just have to agree. Or not.
Helen, in order to keep the recycling fee and to keep that going, the program over there, I'll make a motion that we agree to that increase.
I second the motion.
Motion made with a second. All those with favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it. So ordered.
The next thing is, as we already said, trick-or-treat is October 31st, and that's in, with the Borough and we feel. The next item is somewhat with the budget. I was going over the, um, rent for the, and the church has not had it raised in their rent since 2007, when they started. I am suggesting, because the electric's gone up, the sewer and all that's gone up, that we raise the rent to $25 a month, to 225 instead of 200. With that, we would have to notify, give them 30, at least 30 days notification. I'm suggesting that the rent doesn't increase until January of 2016, and we'd have to give them a new, uh, contract. And I basically need to know if you gentlemen are agreeable to that.
So, technically, we're raising the rent on the use of the facility with the intent that the church is going to continue to rent. So, we're not raising the, we're just raising the fee to rent the room.
Yeah, they have, and they're.
We're not raising it on the church, per se. We're raising it on the room.
No, we're raising it on the church. The church has a contract right now for $200 a month.
Okay.
They've had that since 2007. And that included that room, the kitchen, use of this room. And it was supposed to cover some of the electrical and the water and sewage and all that.
I make the motion then that we go ahead and approve the increase of $25 a month to 225, the renting of the facility to the church, and with the renewing of the contract to be dated starting January 1st, 2016.
Okay.
Motion made. I'll second. All those with favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it. So ordered. Do you have on the board there for the next one, and Helen, I'm going to step into this if you don't mind.
Go ahead, have fun.
So that you don't get blamed for wanting something out of your budget that I sat in here.
I do.
Huh?
I do.
I know. I was sitting here and took a look at the budget, going over our budget and putting numbers together, taking a look at our overall health, and it's been an endeavor mine ever since I come here to get this heating systems in this place back into working order, something that is economical, and it's already panned off with the ones we got on the savings on, what you call. We have presently, that was going to be put into budget for next year. And I'd like to see an approval and do it this year so that it's done. We have the money. Before our winter comes in, we'll save $5,000 to $8,000 on this propane if we have a cold winter, and we have bids out there, Helen, for.
We have one quote.
One quote.
I got that for the budget.
Okay, for the budget, yes. So, we've done that, and we're going to put it in for next year's budget. After looking at it, I think it makes common sense that, and that budget figure there is, Helen?
$13,000 for four units.
$13,000, okay. She needs to put that out if the board agrees to it. Put that out, three other bids, like we have in the past. Get a new bid in here, but make approval here tonight that she cannot waste her time, that we're willing to do this, because you'll save almost that in fuel this year. And we'll have complete new systems in here, and those old units are 25 years up there that are starting to eat us to death on repairs and maintenance will be out of here.
Yeah, and we'll get rid of the.
Good reliable heat pump systems here that are working well. So, I would like to make a motion that we give Helen the opportunity to advertise, uh, I mean, to invite.
Get quotes.
Quotes, uh, to invite quotes, uh, from the three different people we have in the past to get a, a price on this that'll give us, and bring it before this board next meeting by golly for approval that we get it started as quickly as possible for the winter months come.
I second.
Okay. Motion made with a second. All those with favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it. I appreciate that. It is much needed for the rest of this building, and it will be completely renovated.
At least the heating system.
Are they removing the old units in the quotes? Are you asking for them to remove the old units?
No, I haven't done that, Jesse, okay? That is something that I've talked to Tom and I'm out here, whoever's here. Those old units up there are sitting on a curb. They can make a curb cover up there for every one of them. Take those units over, take them, put them down over the side themselves, and take them to the scrapyard. They're not all that big and that heavy.
Right. I, I just wondered if that was part of the.
No, that, that was something that you would have, you would take time and demo it out up there yourself. Make the curb covers and latch them down. Uh, they have the rubber, we have the glue, we have everything that we need to put to, to do that up there. But they should come off the roof once these systems are up, and, uh, that'd be a springtime job for the rest of the year. No sense of being up there. Yep. Second driveway, Helen?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Koker is asking to have a second driveway on to his property up on Princeton Street. He has to ask for a waiver of the driveway ordinance for this because the driveway ordinance does not allow a property that does not have frontage of 600 feet or more to have two driveways. Basically, he's asking this because it goes down, Henry?
Pardon?
The drive.
His driveway at the present time was down the slope. They were in around the bottom of his place, and they got to get down there. He would like to move it up, and he has a room up there, and it won't affect the site distances up there, but he don't have, what, the 600 foot?
He doesn't have this frontage for it.
He don't have the frontage for it, and what he'd like to do is be able to park his cars in front of his house there to get out, walk in without, he'd have to go downstairs and go up the steps. And so, he pulls down in there, he has to, down in there, he either has to walk up the outside, go in the front door, or go in and climb up the steps out there. When you're in and out, he explained to me, I know Jim's like, oh, let's get some ears on him. He'd like to be able to park up top of there. I see nothing, nothing wrong, or I don't see anything that'd affect the township road condition or anything else out there. That's, that's a recommendation, but we'll have to take a look at it.
And to issue the, the permit for it, I just need you guys to grant him the waiver.
I make the motion that we allow Mr. Koker to move forward with this driveway improvement, adding the second driveway, um, with the waiver of the 600 feet.
Yeah. So, it'd be section eight, uh.
Section eight.
C.
Sub C, section two.
Uh, it's actually be section one and two of that, so the whole section C.
Yes.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
I second the motion.
All those with favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it. So ordered.
Okay. And the last thing I have is.
Holding tank.
Holding tank ordinance. One of the pumbers objected to the term owner as the first property owner. So, I went through and proposed a change. Instead of having owner, having property owner designated as the owner of the property, not the owner of the holding tank or the portage on. And I went through and all that, and under six, uh, which is on B2, I basically said it, the determining the need to clean shall be, in the first instance, the responsibility of the cleaner. If the cleaner should fail, then the property owner is responsible to call the cleaner, and if the property owner fails, then we get to call, call the cleaner and deal with it. B2, it's in the back. And then, the only other changes was from owner to property owner.
Those changes are highlighted.
Yes. So, if you wish to look it over and, and decide.
Helen, the, the questions that we've had.
That was the only question?
That was the only question.
Yeah.
Therefore, I make a motion that we concur with those wording changes in that.
And then we'd have to advertise.
And then we have to advertise it, yes.
I second.
Motion made with a second. All those with favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it. So ordered. Okay.
Oh, one other little quick announcement.
Yes.
Fall cleanup is October 15, 16, and 17. And then I'm done.
Okay. Okay. And on the agenda there, you have.
Question, um, Helen, did the newsletter go out?
It will be mailed out on Friday. In fact, the check for the postage is in there to be signed. I have, uh, oh, I'm sorry. Fire company donation. Do you wish to, uh, authorize the payment of the other $25,000 of the donation to them with the October bills?
This was for who?
Fire company. I know, it says fire. And with that also, that we, um, pay the foreign fire money to the Dunkin' and Fire Company. Thanks.
In regards to that, is that the only same line with the Dunkin' and Fire Company here to request?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I said, we're approval of the money, this money here.
This would be going towards their capital reserve account.
The issue is to issue, you, I understand you guys have a question here about the capital reserve, what you'd like to do. So, now it's time to speak up. The two are interrelated.
Okay. I was told that that was taken care of last night's meeting. I think what they were asking was to have, take $9,000 out of that capital reserve money to help, uh, subside to build for the tanker repair.
Okay. The question did come up last night's meeting when I was there, but he said he was sending a representative up here to bring that forward for the supervisors to hear that request that they're allowed to do that, okay? So, that's why I put it back to the representative for the Fire Company. The $25,000 that they put into the capital reserve, the Fire Company has made a request. And Brian, they talked to you, I guess?
I guess they talked to you, Brian?
No. No, nobody talked to you? They mentioned it to me. They would like to use, they had extensive repair on their pumper. Is that not the case?
It's a tanker.
Tanker, tanker pumper.
Yes.
Okay. And they would like to be allowed to use. And they would like to be allowed to use some of that nine thousand dollars, or some of that nine thousand dollars, be allowed to pay for those repairs on that pump. But they didn't go just take our money and do it, they came and made a request. If the board says no, it'll be no. If the board says yes, it'll be because they agreed to honor that. I think, I think that it's only appropriate that we allow them to use that with the expenses they have for the pumper to take it out of that capital reserve, which is earmarked for other uses. So it's my opinion or my recommendation that they be allowed to do that.
And the agreement is with the board that any time money's used out of the capital expense, it has to be approved by the board?
That's correct, yeah.
Correct, okay.
That's correct. And they've held tight for that. So I make a motion that they be allowed to use that money to pay that pumper repair out of capital reserve. And the board had approved that, so thanks for coming and thanks for asking for that in the proper manner.
I second the motion.
Motion made with a second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, so order.
And the donation and foreign fire pay those?
Yes, Helen, and that could be a separate motion or included in it.
Up to you.
The donation, yes.
Okay.
Has to be separate now.
Yes, it's separate, we voted on it.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we forward the money from the foreign fire insurance to the Fire Company.
And the donation?
And a donation, yes.
And what's the amount of those?
You look at foreign fire, donation is twenty-five thousand. And it's nineteen something?
And that's complete?
Nineteen thousand, three oh eight, sixty-six.
That's the foreign fire. And yes, it does complete the donation for this year.
Thank you, you're good, such a good mind reader. I make the motion that we go ahead and approve the fire donation of the five thousand along with the nineteen thousand, three hundred and eight dollars and sixty-eight cents for
Foreign fires.
The foreign fires to the Duncan Fire Department.
Okay.
I second the motion.
Motion made with a second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so order.
What's in the capital reserve, how much money they working with there?
I have to ask them that, I guess.
You have to ask them?
This is their capital reserve.
Yeah, not ours.
Yeah, the agreement was if they put money into the capital reserve, that in order for them to use it outside of the spectrum of what it's used for, it has to be, has to come before the supervisors to approve the expenditure out of that capital reserve fund for anything outside of that. So the nine thousand is requested come out of the capital reserve to pay for the repair of the tanker?
Yes. Tanker pumper.
The dumb thing that's in my mind, this is if you don't know how much is there, how do you know that they haven't used it before? Because if you remember, you go back some time ago, I asked that question, that I was under the impression with five years, it's twenty-five thousand dollars, there was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in capital reserve. I never heard of anybody coming, I've been to the meetings and I never heard anybody come and ask for it before. This is the first time I've ever heard them ask to use it. Now, after that meeting when I spoke of the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that I had thought was in the reserve, a gentleman representative that night told me that they had used fifty thousand dollars of that money. But now how are you, how do you have a reserve that you're responsible for if you don't know how much they're spending?
Well, nothing says that they can't spend that whole twenty-five year after year after year, nothing says they have to hold it and bank it.
But then why did he come and ask the question?
Well, because it was, he asked the question because it's going for a different use. It is to be used for the purchase of new equipment, this is different. They're asking to use that money to make. What's that?
The agreement was new equipment, maintenance, and emergency expenditure.
Okay.
Approved by the board.
New equipment, I think from the contract that I saw that we had signed with the capital reserve.
So you do have a contract now?
Well, we always had, Jody, I presented that here one night that we had signed. They submitted that to us and this board signed it.
I'm asking.
Yeah.
I'm asking.
I brought that up at a meeting here several months ago.
Because we indicated several meetings ago.
Remember that? Yes, I did. There was an agreement that was signed by them. They offered agreement to guarantee it that that's what it'd be used for. The Fire Company themselves made that offer.
Oh, I know, Byron corrected you when you indicated several months ago that it was a gentleman's agreement.
Yeah, and so we went back and took a look and we found it and we have it on file.
And it does say just new equipment?
Did we not, what's that?
Yeah, I couldn't tell you because that's just new equipment right off the top of my head, but yes, I did find it.
The original version of that was new equipment, new equipment, maintenance, and emergency expenditure.
I don't think the maintenance was in it, new equipment or they wouldn't ask for it.
I'm just asking.
That, that's the way I understood, that's why they asked for it.
I'll pull it for you guys.
The only reason that I even interjected is because, you know, it was a legitimate question, what is the amount in the capital reserve? And, you know, accountability was a big issue last month, so I'm kind of curious as to where that stands.
I'll check the book, I'll check the last report. I'll get you guys a copy of the.
I'll ask that question, Jody.
Thank you.
Yes.
With the amount of money you give them, would it be unreasonable to ask for a monthly or quarterly financial statement from them just to see how they are moving?
Well, more often than not, we get them when they're here, when there's a representative here, which we've done here tonight. They usually present that with it, same as Craig does with his. Usually when they come, they give us a, a, a report by golly, where they're at.
It's usually an annual.
Pardon?
It's usually an annual.
Yeah, an annual.
We get the audit.
I've never heard a monthly, I've heard you, I've seen you get the end of year and get their audits, but I've never heard a monthly update like Craig does.
But he's also brought other figures up here by golly and submitted them where they were along, along the line, I've seen them.
I'll pull that too.
Okay. You got solicitor not here, not too much for him to be here anyhow. The engineer is not here tonight because there was nothing for the engineer. Police report. And the thing on deck there is emergency operations plan has been before the board supervisors for some time to review, to make a motion by golly to adopt. And that's before you're here tonight. Tabled several times, I hope the supervisors have taken a look at it.
There is a resolution for you to adopt and sign and the promulgation of the plan itself.
Okay.
Pull that ten times fast.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the resolution number two zero one five dash zero four, the resolution of Penn Township and the County of Perry adopting the Penn Township Perry County Emergency Operations Plan.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
I second the motion.
Motion made with a second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Anything else in regards to that, Helen?
Not me.
What's that?
With the adoption of the resolution, the promulgation's automatic.
Automatic.
You just have to sign it later.
Okay.
You've got anything else?
No, we've got an update on our vehicle, we were, it was built, the date they gave us, I looked and it looks like it was filmed on Saturday, I don't think that can be good. So I'm gonna check that date again, but they haven't received delivery of it yet or anything, so that'll be, that'll be. We were approved by PennDOT for the next grant phase, so they were still in the, be able to get grants from PennDOT. We did interview a potential hirer, a Paul Butler, and I'd like to request a vote be taken or that he be approved for, for hire.
Okay, the interview was conducted today by the three supervisors here at six o'clock. Who's wish the board, Karen, Mr. Butler?
I move that Mr. Butler be hired as a part-time police officer.
Okay, motion made, do I hear a second?
I second.
Motion made with a second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so order.
Fourteen fifty?
Yes.
Permit report? Yes.
This is for Officer Pickles. I understand Marysville got a brand-new Ford pickup truck, A four, one hundred percent by drug money, drug seizure money?
I don't know, I didn't, I didn't hear anything.
That's what I'm hearing. I was just wondering how that happened, I talk about drug money and drugs here past couple of months.
Yeah, I don't, I don't deal with their, their budget or anything.
Budget, apparently it was paid for by drug money. Maybe you should get hold of their chief and see how they perform that act. You guys pretty sweet, we could get something like that. If I'm wrong about it, please let me know.
Sure, I will.
Thank you.
Check the seats.
Yes, Frank.
Whenever you're, I'm not sure how your jurisdiction work, I mean you're out of the county on highway detail. Is there another officer on duty for Penn Township, Indiana?
Yeah.
How many of these?
They come up, they come up, it's.
How many agreements do we write in the course of a year?
It all depends, I mean, it comes up, but it is in addition to what the coverage is. And that officer is available for, to be called in from.
Into the police department or not into general fund or?
It comes back into the.
It comes into your police services ink revenue and the wage is paid out of police services expense.
All right, the wage is paid out of police service.
Who signs those agreements, supervisors or?
No, if it's a grant, it's, you know, it's a, it's a grant, a lot, you know, a lot of times it's, it's just a verbal agreement, they call it a grant.
I'm talking about when you go out of Penn or Duncan to do extra work inside.
Yeah.
Who approves that?
I do.
You do?
Yeah.
None of that needs to be approved by the supervisors?
Not normally, no.
How's the, how's the insurance covering on what we have?
And I believe we're talking about the incident on three twenty-two or?
Well, I just know you're over.
Yeah, a lot of the.
In Dalton County, I just, it's like, you know, can you manage your jurisdiction here?
In the, in the work zones, there's, there's circumstances that we can and that's all.
I thought county had a dispatch unit and you could wait.
No, no, that was an extra, it was, it was a total extra employment.
You, you, police vehicles and?
Yeah, and they, and they pay for those, yeah.
What do we get per hour for that?
Excuse me?
What do, what did recharge for hour, per hour for that service?
That particular, I think we're, we're getting fifteen dollars for the vehicle.
Uh, yeah, it sounds like that.
So this is common? This is something we've been doing for a while?
Oh, sure. Rick, twenty-five.
We get.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Yeah.
Twenty-five dollars an hour for a officer and vehicle?
No, no.
No, no, that's just the vehicle portion.
That's just the vehicle portion, yeah.
And where's the officer's salary?
Every now and then we, we'll get requests and that's what we, we fulfill, yeah.
We get requests to leave the township.
As an extra employment, yeah.
How's that, like I said, how's that covered under the insurance?
We're covered under there, they, they hold us under their insurance and hold us, the township part most of the time.
So the township gets a certificate of insurance for that, there's an actual certificate then exchanged for that?
Yeah, they have, I believe that insurance certificate was sent to the solicitor's office, yeah.
How, how long have we been doing this?
I mean, it's, it's out there, people, people, people ask and we, we do it, if it's, if we're able to, yeah.
Is it recorded on this report?
Uh, no, no, no.
So that's separate above these hours?
Yes.
And then how do you handle, how do you handle citations out of jurisdiction?
We don't, we're not there as, to write citations, we're there for specific.
So you're just there for lights and determine?
Yeah.
Well, I'm gonna ask you the same question over again, hate to be redundant, but per hour, what are you charging per hour for an officer?
And it varies, it varies depending on where we're going or what we're doing.
Okay, what'd you charge him, twenty-two, three twenty-two?
Twenty-two, it was sixty, sixty-five dollars an hour.
Okay. You sure it was sixty-five an hour?
I believe it was, yeah.
But that includes the car and the officer?
Yes.
So it's twenty-five for the car and forty dollars an hour for the officer?
It was fifty for the officer and, and the balances for the township, yeah.
So is it fifteen for the car, Helen, or twenty-five?
I'd have to go get the paper to be sure.
I just thought I heard you say twenty-five, that's why I was trying to do the math.
Yeah, it was, I'm pretty sure it was fifteen.
And this is something we've been doing for a while?
That, that particular incident had just come up, but we've been, we've been requested before for services.
About investigations outside of the township?
Excuse me?
About investigations outside of township? Or, oh shoot, I don't know what I wanna say. I say we're having theft, I say something in retail town share for what townships have thefts and they, they wanna have some undercover officers. Can you do that kind of work?
If, yeah, we'd have to do the same thing we do with Duncan, we'd have to get a contract for something like that, if we're doing, we're doing investigations like that, any investigations that originate from here that go to other townships, we, you know, we can go out there and do them too.
Have we ever done anything like that before?
Not that I recall, no.
Thank you.
How can we do investigations in a different, I'm not, I'm not a police officer, so I don't know, in a different jurisdiction?
The same as we're doing in, in the borough, we have a contract with the borough and that's, I mean, if we were doing the police work and, and that.
So if it led to another municipality, something that originated in.
Yeah, something that originated here.
Then that's part of.
That's part of our.
Being here.
That would be, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
How do we track how much time spent off? How do the supervisors track how much time is spent somewhere else in the money coming in? There has to be some accountability.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Well, it's not on this department activity log, is there a separate log that they received that shows those hours?
Yeah, the checks are, and if we're, if it's an extra job, it's, the checks are made out to the township, yeah. And then they're paid through, through the regular channels. But as far as investigations go or anything, we don't charge anything to, I mean, if a theft would go down to Harrisburg and I would have to bring a boat back here or something, that wouldn't be, you know, that wouldn't be a separate thing, that's our, that's our investigation and that's, that's what we, we went there to investigate. And sometimes it'll lead into, you know, other jurisdictions have the same, same problem and then, and, and they, they end up sometimes go, go along too and then you do multiple, multiple arrests and charges.
Is it because you're local municipality that you don't have to go through the same processes as the state police?
I don't know. You mean, we do investigate.
The state, now I'm talking about the traffic control, state police typically will, in the, they're requested to have a presence in the construction zones. And they have a process that they have to follow and the approval procedures and things, so we don't have to, we can just not have to deal with that as long as you say it's okay?
If it's approved, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Correspondents?
Of course, well, the.
Pendleton Maintenance?
Yes, they're offering to have people come for the winter partnership meeting on October twenty-second. This is at Little Buffalo State Park.
Okay. Helen, let you know, see if Thomas, Steve wanna go again?
Okay.
They moved them up there before, see what they have to say.
Okay.
If nothing else is informed.
Yes. Perry County Crime Stoppers are thanking you for the contribution. Bloomfield Library is asking for a donation.
Helen, we've been through that before. No, we've been through that before every year, you know, usually the people in this area use a library or et cetera closer and we've always denied it in the past, what is the wish of the board?
This is to the Crime Stoppers group.
Pardon?
This is to the Crime Stoppers.
No, 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 no.
This is for the, the library, donation to the New Booth Bill Library.
Crime Stoppers were thanking you for the donation, you already gave them.
What's that? The Crime Stoppers, yeah, they already thanked you for the donation that you gave them. We've had that request before for the library up there, we've never donated to a crime. Because of Marysville or Newport or someplace else they use, use it closer to our residents here. That, that has been the theory of it in the past.
I don't think we need to make a motion, not to, no one's making a motion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For one of the next, right?
Yeah. Make a motion that we move on, uh, we need to move the next item.
Okay.
The numbers for me? Okay. And old business, PP and O'Gramp, go ahead.
One second, um, I got this, the CAPTAC, not CAPTAC, the Cumberland Perry County Task Force, um, is, is announced that there's going to be a open house section, session with information about next year's rock slope project on October seventh at the Marysville Fire Hall. That's from two thirty to eight PM.
Okay.
Now we're on old business.
I'm sure they'll have a lot of people there.
I'm sure.
PP and O'Gramp, old business.
Okay, this was, uh, tabled last month. Do you, I just need to know if you gentlemen wish to do this or not? This is changing the lights in the building and the garage. Very expensive.
Sit in here and took a look at that, see what they had offered, it was a long time for the payoff, although at the present time, in my opinion, we wouldn't benefit much from that grant. I know the guy wants the letter, but whatever the wish of the board on that grant to make the changes, it's really not going to, uh, it's not something that you're going to spend, we're not going to spend that money upfront.
Yeah.
Yep.
Payoff's going to be a long time.
Yeah, payoff's a long time.
They're expensive.
It's expensive.
Yes.
If it was included with the heat changeover and everything like that, it's worthwhile.
No, it's just going to LED lights.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not worth it.
I looked at some two-foot lights to replace some new.
I'll make a motion that we don't comply with the, with the request for the grant.
Okay.
My second motion.
Okay. Motion made with a second all those favor, give their consent for saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, so we're an unemployment change, Helen.
Carolyn. You're up.
You should have in your package the chart that I put together. To yours to decide if you want to switch from PSATs, paying PSATs to handle the unemployment, or if you want to drop PSATs and take care of everything on your own and those cost savings. Calendar years, two thousand thirteen and two thousand fourteen are actual, based on the figures that I got from Helen. Two thousand fifteen is, uh, the difference is estimated because there's still two quarters that need to be paid. Two thousand sixteen, the only thing on here that I can say is ninety-nine percent accurate and factual is the solvency fee rate that would happen to be paid if you dropped PSATs. The gross wages, because that's fiscal year, fiscal year's gross wages that have already been reported, and what the solvency fee payment would be in order to be able to, if you drop PSATs, to be able to contest, appeal any unemployment benefit charges. What would be paid to PSATs is total speculative because you don't know what your wages are going to be. The PSATs rate Helen did get potential savings if you dropped PSATs would be six hundred twenty-five dollars and forty-two cents for the year. Totally up to yuns. If you drop PSATs, you still, you still would have to pay the solvency fee to be able to contest any unemployment charges. That would be the only thing you would pay. PSATs, pay into PSATs quarterly. Approximately the fifteen hundred, could be more. I'll try to answer any questions that they have.
I understand that we would also have to budget money in case anyone claimed against us because we would have to pay, even if with the solvency fee. We, they, our, our challenge was denied. We would have to pay it out of our coffers.
It was otherwise. The fifteen hundred and five goes to PSATs, that's all you pay.
That's all we pay.
That's dead, that's a dead issue, there's no, no chance escalation like there is otherwise.
Not unless our wages are higher than.
That's right.
And we pay ninety-five hundred.
Next year, next year would be, you would pay that on the first nine thousand five hundred dollars that each employee made.
So like the full timers, that's done by the first quarter. The part timers, depending on how much they make, it might drag up the year or might not. And our rate with PSATs went down.
Was that decrease reflected in these numbers?
Uh, I believe so.
I already said.
Did the, our rate decrease from PSATs, is it reflected in this too?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, next to the last column, that's right.
Yeah.
It's, it's been consistently dropping since two thousand thirteen.
Yes. Because we've been lucky and not having the claims.
That's my understanding from Helen that if you decide to change, she needs to notify PSATs ASAP.
I would have to. Yeah, within the next three, four days, yeah.
Okay, I took a hard look at that with Helen the other day when I was in here, took a hard look at it myself. And I would recommend that we stay with the PSATs, it's a one-time fee. Because the others can escalate and we're going to have to pay that out there, you're going to have to budget money somewhere for something that you don't know what's going to be.
And we may use it, we may not.
And you may use it, you may not. The issue of it is if we have unemployment, we have some of the part timers that leave, or we have people applying for it, which we did before, that's soon going to escalate to that point there that we'd have to pay for.
Assuming that we, if we challenge it and we lost the challenge.
That's right, challenge it and you lose it, that's correct.
And that solvency fee gives us the right to challenge.
That's right.
Correct?
The solvency.
Yeah.
The solvency fee must be paid.
Period.
If you drop PSATs in order to have the right to challenge.
Well, if you're recommending we stay with PSATs, there's been a motion, it's time for, I think it's time to move on. We know the motion is, continue to do what we're doing.
But you still got, you still got, you got a draw.
No, I just need a consensus, that's all I need.
A consensus, you're going to stay with them or not stay with them?
Yeah.
Okay. Have to know that. I mean, that's, uh.
Yes, I, I need to know to let.
I'll make a motion that we stay with PSATs, uh, with our present program over there because it seems to me that you don't need to worry about that escalation that we're going to have to pay out of it. It's a one-time fee and we're done. What is the wish of the board?
Aye, second.
Okay, motion made with a second, all those in favor, give their consent for saying aye. Ayes have it, thank you for that.
Thank you, Carolyn, for the hard work.
Okay.
Thank you.
I will just add one thing, this really does need to be looked at yearly to see what those savings would be instead of just letting it go and, oh, well, that's the way we did it, that's the way we're always going to do it.
Okay. Perry County Planning Assistance, Helen?
Yes, this is the program where they would assist us if we pay them a thousand dollars for the rest of the year. And believe me, we'll get another one towards the end of the year for next year, an offer.
That's also a service that, remember they engaged in one time and never got used, a thousand dollars was paid out. Two that was never used, uh.
What do they assist you with?
They will assist you with updating ordinances, uh, they already assist by reviewing land developments of division plans, free.
Free.
What else, basically.
Whatever, plans Jesse at the present time, about the same thing you're paying for, you get free from them now.
The only other thing is if we wanted to update our order, zoning ordinance or generate a new type of ordinance, they would help us with that. If it's land development or land usage type of ordinance.
Another thing that they're in, in, in progress of doing in conjunction with other counties is getting digital aerial, um, information where they're going to pay for planes to fly over the county, take pictures, that's going to be helpful with the, um, Google Earth.
Google Earth, it'll help with the GIS systems that.
For development purposes? Pardon me?
That would assist in.
It would assist in development, in development, assist police departments and fire departments, all those other things, you know, so, you know, there's a lot of benefit that comes with the aerial part, but again, that's going to be paid with my grant money, from my understand, with cooperation of other, I think there's like six or seven, four or five counties involved.
Probably Dolphin.
Dolphin County, Cumberland County, Mary County.
Maybe Junianna.
They're looking at Junianna, that, um, so there's other counties involved with that progress of the aerials and the digital imagery for Google Earth. So it will benefit zoning and.
Taxes and all of that.
Yeah. And I don't know if those things will be made available to us without joining, like you said, Mr. Holman, I don't know what all comes with this, it doesn't really give us a lot of.
No, actually that, we normally get that stuff free, we normally get that information free.
Information free, yeah.
Last time they updated the G, their programs for the tax parcels and GIS and all that, we got it free. Plus you can download it off the internet.
There's some big projects or some big things on the board, Jesse, sitting out there and you take a look at it in advance, it may be worth your while, at the present time, there isn't. It, it, it's what the story is, and that's my opinion. I'm not saying that there won't be a day or a need, but at the present time, on, on all these big subdivisions, whatnot come through, they review them and they offer their comments, which are usually concurrent with, with what ours zoning is set up, now they're, what Brian's saying here is true, there's plans by, I like to put that other stuff out there, yes.
If you see a need for it, can you, can you join then?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, they do, they offer this at the beginning of every year, but if you want to, you can actually go to them and ask them.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, next item is the Perry County Waste Management Updates. This is a big ol' one I put in the box. Uh, basically on this is, they're asking us to ratify the waste management plan. We have done so in the past, and I'm looking here. We actually have until November eleventh to do this, but of course they'd like it as soon as possible. So it's either has to be done this month or next month. If you really want to read that, you don't have a life.
It's something we've done automatically every year, Helen.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Therefore, I make a motion that we concur that we ratify that municipal notification review, the comment, unless you want to take a look at it from table, I see no reason why. You should put it off for another month unless you think there's something in there you can digest in there.
You're going to find out how, where all the garbage goes.
Yeah.
And the recycling.
Something that we've always ratified.
Did you make a motion?
I'll make a motion, yes. Motion made with a second, all those in favor, give their consent for saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered.
Okay, newsletter will be mailed on Friday, the check is in there for signature. And like normal, I don't have a number in there because I don't know the number until I mail it. And then the next item I have is fourteen fifty State Road. Before we do anything else, we have to, I gave you guys all the solicitors' names and all that and you three got back to me on who you wanted to go with. We need to confirm that with a motion.
Okay.
Dennis Chateau.
I'll make the motion that we'll go ahead and accept Mr. Chateau to represent the township in the matter at the, uh, situation at fourteen fifty State Road, fourteen fifty State Road, uh, Mr. Chateau was the low bid in that process.
Hey Helen, aren't we acting on the response?
Well, yes, we are, but I wanted to get that portion done first.
Okay.
Yes.
That portion wasn't done, okay, go ahead.
I need a second.
Motion made, second, all those in favor.
Well, I need the second.
A second.
Okay.
All those in favor, give their consent for saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered.
Okay. Now to, I gave you Mr. Chateau's letter on that and best thing to do would be to read it. But basically he, uh, says that we are, it's his opinion that the use of the property for storage or sales of vehicles, other than vehicles owned privately by Mr. Edkin, violates the zoning ordinance unless and until he obtains a zoning permit and a land development plan approval. All that's giving his, the rest of it's giving his reasoning's why. So what we need to know is, what I need to know is what you gentlemen wish to do, we did check, well, the police checked the vehicles, um, the that you could get the VIN number off of, don't belong to him.
Two came back that, yeah, didn't belong to him and there were other vehicles there that, that no, no record came out. And one didn't even have a VIN number on it.
So Helen, we're back to the one thing that we took a look at, he's given the condition to use, even though he's given the condition to use.
No, 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 Mr. Edkins was not given a condition to use, he was given, he got a permit for a private storage.
Okay, yes, but then.
Then he got a, uh, certificate of occupancy.
Go ahead.
For a private business and it stated on the certificate occupancy, not for commercial use, profit or gain. And if he wishes to change the use, he had to get a land development plan.
Okay, and he went and got that off of John Madden.
He got the, that was all first, then the next thing, when zoning came in.
From John Madden's, the one that says, even though he was granted that. That, that it could be allowed by John.
He got it for garage, warehouse, outside auto stores, storage and sales.
Okay, and that specific document from Madden is.
A non-conformant.
Non-conforming, not a condition to use, the non-conformant, just like, like anybody that had something before his zoning command and could prove that you had it, you could file out a non-conformant report with the zoning. He asked for a non-conformant report, it was granted to him, but under that, it states that he has to complete, to be with township laws and regs, a land development plan, he needs to follow up with that.
Yes.
Now, he thought maybe he had that non-conformant report there or that permit or that agreement, but he was still in violation of what he'd done because he didn't follow up the other rules and regulations within the township. Am I not correct?
Yes.
That's right.
And that's how.
And so you gave an attorney, so, and give him all the facts and he agrees with exactly. Give him all the facts, and he agrees with exactly our finding of where we were at.
Yes.
Which is in violation, if he's selling other people's vehicles.
Yes.
Yeah, there you are.
Yes.
And so he, if he wants to change, and if you take a look at what all is required to do that, we have that list of stuff, there's a whole list of things required to do that.
Yes, if he wants to have a auto sales.
Yes.
Permanent building that has a private office for storage of files, a display area, an outdoor display area must be properly graded and have adequate lighting, must have a phone line for the business, must sign, have a sign attached to the building or built separately that displays the dealership's name and can be seen by the public. The dealership must conform with all local building codes and zoning ordinances, the hours has to be posted to be seen by the public, and he must own a certificate of occupancy that meets the standards of the Pennsylvania Construction Code Act, and that's directly from DMV.
Now, was there restrictions on size of vehicles or types of vehicles that can be sold?
No, it does not say that. That would probably be under his license.
Because I know with the Eagles Nest, at one point, there was a dealership wanting to go back in there, but they wanted to sell construction equipment too, and that was not authorized.
I do believe that was not authorized under our zoning ordinance. Wasn't that right, Henry?
Yeah, and that was heavy equipment.
Yeah.
As I remember.
But as far as DMV issuing a car dealership license, if there's any restrictions on that portion, they would say it. Our portion would be the zoning ordinance, whether that type of sales would be allowed.
So are they, do we know if they're zoned for that or not?
Commercial is zoned for an auto dealership, yeah.
But I mean zoned for heavy equipment?
I don't believe so, under commercial, but I'd have to double check.
I think that's what that was.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that we're not treating one differently than the other, you know, under the zone.
Yeah, no, no. Let's see, what he, and what's really weird is he didn't even, if he was going to have a car dealership, he didn't have to get the non-conformant because that's a conforming use.
Good.
Whereas, he got the non-conformant because it was supposed to be a private.
Good. Yeah, I understand all that, I just want to make sure that it, that it's been zoned the same way as the other properties, you know.
Yeah, I understand, yeah.
That he understands that there is restrictions on zoning for certain types of vehicles.
Yeah. Gentlemen, I don't know if you saw the zoning officer's letter or not, I thought I gave that to you. Come here, a zoning officer. Got everything in here. Picture, they got that. There's that, that's there. Come on, we're zoning that there. And that's typically, I thought I had the zoning officer's letter in here too. That's all that. Oh, I know I have the zoning officer's letter. Just question is finding it. But the zoning officer basically says the same thing Dennis does, before Dennis. I know I put it in there, and I got it out of places too.
What is the wish of the board to deal with this issue? I make a motion that we start with the township notifying Mr. Edkins that he's in violation.
Okay.
The second emotion.
Motion made with a second, all those in favor, give their consent for saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, so we're.
Okay, question, you want me to do it, you want Dennis to do it, you want them to do it?
No.
I don't care which one.
Dennis is the one to make the decision, upheld all findings. I would ask for him to.
He holds the weight.
He holds the weight, that's exactly right.
I will do that.
Okay.
Okay.
New business with them getting a fire company.
You took their care of that. I'm assuming that the Perry County Economic Development Letter on the tax waiver is on hold? You guys didn't make a motion or anything?
We didn't.
It's on hold, okay.
I think it was stated that.
Once they got them.
Hold until we get information back from the other bodies.
Yes. Okay. And then the last thing I have, and I hate to use a nasty word, but budget. First off, we have to set a budget meeting date. I'm going to request not the 21st of October. I have a CAPTAC meeting, and I can't be at three meetings at one time. Haven't figured that one out yet. I would recommend the week of, something like the 13th through the 15th, that's the middle of the week, or middle of the month, I mean, two weeks from now, two weeks before end of month meeting.
How good is he?
13th, I am not available. 14th through the 15th, I am.
Not good?
No, I am available 14th and 15th.
Figure you don't want to do it on Friday, and no one likes Monday meetings.
How about the 15th?
15th's fine with me.
Fine with me.
Oh, that's also Fall Cleanup Day, too. Is that going to make a difference to you?
I can do that.
Because that stops at 6:00.
And I got us covered with health. Yeah, we're good.
Okay. Time?
Anytime in the afternoon would be good for me.
You want to do it in the afternoon, you want to do it at night, or, it's up to you guys. We're here.
I'm, I'm, I'm open, anything afternoon, so.
Okay. Anytime in the afternoon, he says.
Just anytime after 12:00. When the 15th, so, whatever your guys' schedules are.
You don't finish up till 3:00, right?
Yeah.
Oh, 6:00.
I can walk away from it.
6:00 on that day.
They're done, they should close up at 6:00.
Yeah.
I can walk away from it after 3:00. But every time you guys decide, we finally, I can make it easy.
We're here anyway, so. Sounds like it's coming down to you.
Yeah, I, like I said, whatever it convenia for you to do in the afternoon or evening, doesn't matter to me.
4:00 too late?
Not to me.
That's fine with me, yeah.
Okay. Now, you have it in front of you. Yeah, in front of you. And any comments, changes, anything, let me know. I did update it, Henry, for tonight's, September's bills, so you can see that.
Okay.
And that's all I have, hopefully.
Jumping back to your old business, Henry, thanks for the new windows. It's drafty this winter when you have to sit there.
Especially when you're sitting right on the heat, you'll never know it. I like the curtains.
Hey, I kept every curtain for every time we moved someplace, and I was like, I got a fight, three that looks like good, until they can put the blinds up.
Okay, being able to throw the business, I make a motion, adjourn.
Second?
Second, all those in favor, give their consent for saying aye. Ayes have it, so we're.
Okay. We got shuts. That's fine. And then here's the resolution and the promulgation that needs to be signed, too. And that one I can sign tomorrow. Please don't.